... given meeting Thursday, February 25th at 2021 7:00 PM. We need to approve the agenda, approve the minutes, warrants, correspondence, board liaison report, VCDP grant updates, skating party, six new business, knowledge receipt of revised zoning bylaws, park and rec resignation, opening, Ray Rodriguez resigned, gravel crush bids, and we're gonna need an executive, oh, sorry. You gotta do warning documents regarding new election first, and then we're gonna go into executive. I'd like to add a executive session for personnel discipline, disciplinary, sorry. We will be taking action afterwards. Also, I would like to add a discussion after this executive session, the organization of the administrative position, and then we will have public comment.
I, just so you know, I'm also, it's this in the liaison report, which I did not know was on the agenda for tonight. Obviously, I've not written one this week. I also have a small update on town hall documentation. It will take me two minutes.
Oh, and I skipped over, we need to do a liquor license renewal.
That's under new business.
Under new business, please.
I need to add to the agenda, board business and appointments.
Under new business?
Um.
Or you want it under old business?
I can go into new, that's fine. New's fine. Doesn't matter where it goes.
Board and.
Yeah, board business and appointments.
Anything else?
I think that's it for the agenda.
Okay, so with all the changes, can I please have a motion to accept?
Make a motion to accept with the amendments. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
I have two things before we get started, Angie, if I can, quickly. Um, one of them is, um, we kinda skipped this on Tuesday night. We had other things on our mind. I just wanna reach out from the Board of Selectmen to the Winchester family. It slipped my mind for sure on Tuesday, but we just wanna wish Jimmy nothing but the best in, in, in the family in his recovery. Just plain and simple. Um, and the other thing that I wanna make sure that we touch on is our conduct, how we run the meetings now, uh, when we get into public comment, because I believe we might have two public comment sessions, is that correct? Yeah, we're gonna do our, we're gonna, we may do one after our, our executive.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, once again, uh, if you unmute yourself, um, we're gonna ask you to mute yourself. If you do it a second time, you're going to be removed from the meeting. We're not gonna, we're not gonna debate, we're not gonna, we will try to answer your questions. And we're not gonna take any badgering or, um, belittling of anybody for anything.
All set?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Approval of minutes from 2:18, did everybody have a chance to read them?
With an amendment.
With an amendment that we're gonna strike, that Mr. Kosis preferred a flat tax rate. However, this is not permitted by the statute. We're gonna.
That was requested by Mr. Kosis, just so everyone understands, he asked for that to be struck from the record.
That's correct. So, we're gonna strike that from the record. So.
Make a motion to approve with the amendment.
All right.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, warrants. Payroll ending 2/14/21 for $10,743.29. Payroll ending 2/21/21 for $10,583.36. Accounts payable for 2/16/21 for $3,004.62/18. That's Green Mountain Power for $1,0236.58. Housick River Hydro for $2,025.60. The total of $3,046.218. Accounts payable for 2/19/21 for $39,538.43. Adirandak Environmental for $2,0862. Apalachee Salt for $5,803.52. Bennington County Sheriff, $5,456.25. Assala Waste Management, $2,0955.45. Green Mountain Power, $2,0475.75. Housick Water Quality District for $14.40. Don Ray and Sons for $3,0239.12. And IRS for 38, excuse me, $3,881.74. That total again is $39,538.43. Accounts payable. Ending 2/20/21 for $3,0998.32. Oh, is that the same one?
No.
No, that's different, right? Different week.
Different.
Okay. For Housick River Hydro for $2,390.87. Green Mountain Power for $16,074.5. Accounts payable 35 for $27,363.65. Don Ray and Sons for $1,0357.92. MVP Healthcare and Company for $10,376.99. Superior Spring and MFG Company for $16,6414. Beamer's, $4,043.84. IRS for $3,058.17. That's it. Can I entertain the motion?
Can we separate those out?
Sure.
Because I believe, I believe there's a payroll. I think I'm in there as zoning, and I'm not sure which payroll period it was.
The problem is, it doesn't tell me.
I know. So, can we just separate out payroll and all abstain from payroll?
Sure. Okay.
And, and do accounts payable, please?
I make a motion to pay warrants except for payroll when properly signed.
So, we're doing accounts payable only right now, correct? Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay. Payroll ending 2/14/21 for $10,743.29.
We just have two little payroll.
And payroll ending 2/21/21, $10,583.36. So, can I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Definitely.
Any discussion? Mike?
Abstain.
Bob?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you. All right, correspondence. Did we have any correspondence? Now.
Well, we had an email. Uh, we had an email from Mr. Kosis with some very specific questions in it, and I forwarded it to all of you. We don't, we're not gonna read it tonight, but I just wanna alert you and make sure you see your emails, and that, that's there. So, that's the, the one correspondence I feel is probably, that was directed to you guys.
Okay.
Right, and we received the email tonight, today, so.
It was not addressed to you, but he asked for it to be forwarded to you.
Right.
Okay.
So, you know, we, we're not, we can't answer those questions well without a little bit of research. Sorry, Jim.
I think he knows that, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure he does. Just wanna make sure that everybody knows we're not dodging the question. We just gotta do a little research on it. Um, these are very specific questions.
Okay. Moving on to board liaison report, Rebecca?
Okay. Maybe I'll just do this.
Okay.
All right. I'll just do it like this, 'cause I don't really wanna, but, well, I'll face the camera. Okay. So, I did not know there was gonna be a board liaison report on here tonight, so I apologize. So, I've not written one, but I'm sure everyone understands, I've not had time to write one. Um, but I do have a lot of things to talk about, and I'm gonna blast through them. Are we doing the warnings later? Are we, was that on there? Did you put it on for later, or should I do it now?
No, we put it on, um, after.
Okay, great. I'll move on to the next thing. I checked in with our lawyer and Will Sanning, and, um, that the question, because Joyce Held submitted an official withdrawal from the race, and they said that she can be struck from the new ballots. Okay, that's update number one. Number two, the skating party, it's gonna be terrible weather on Saturday, there, it will be awful. So, we are postponing it to the following Saturday. I will put out more information on that. And if for some reason we can't skate, it's just gonna be a bonfire with a weenie roast. Okay. Next, um, the Bonadillo Group has let me know that they are basically finished with our fiscal year 2020 audit. They're just wrapping it up, and they'll be sending us all of that documentation. So, the very good news on that is that the numbers in our town report will be considered audited. Lastly, I believe this is lastly, um, I received, I alluded to it a bit last night, but I spoke with Preferred Building Systems, and they are asking if, uh, they were asking about the timing when we're ready to go. And I said we needed to wait for the vote approval, and apparently, there was a lot of paperwork that had been sent and never handled. So, they resent it all to me, and, um, uh, but I have it, I have all the paperwork now. I had to mail it to my home, and I now have it here, and I need help looking at it. It's a lot of builder's agreements, builder applications, all different schedules. And so, I just, um, I had Tim look at it a bit with me today. He understood a lot of what it was. So, we're, we can certainly work through it together, but I want everyone to look at it as well. Secondly, I am advocating, we absolutely must, sorry, I'm letting someone in. Because of the timing of everything, we need to be prepared for a, a, a vote of yes on the bond. And because of that, we need to right now, like tomorrow, Monday, whatever it is. It's no, because we need transitional funding, because we're not in a bond season. So, we need transitional funding, a bridge loan, if this is common apparently with bonds, our bond attorney will help us with it. But I would really like to have all of our financial ducks in a row, the application signed, the bank we're working with, we're working with them. We know what's exactly gonna happen, so when we get, hopefully, if we don't, obviously, none of this matters. But if we get that approval, we're ready to go with the bank, and we can start the work immediately. If we have signed contracts for this, for Preferred Building Systems, with the, with the preliminary down payment, which I believe they told me today is $106,000, um, we, all of the prices are held. They're all held. So, the only way this works is that we are ready to go for the finances. We cannot wait until the approval to do this work. I am not a financial person, I don't work with the banks, I will do my very best on this, but I will need help from Ellen, from whoever else typically works with these things. Okay? So, that's my last thing, under board liaison report, which isn't really a report. And then I'll, we'll do the warrants later.
Do we need?
I mean, the warnings, the warnings.
Do we need, do we need, as a board, Rebecca, do we need to approve, um, anything for the financial part of the town office if it goes through?
Actually, what would be great is if you could actually approve me to, uh, to, for me and working with Tim, to reach out to our, to our lending institutions and to start, so I can have that approval to speak to them. That, that would be great.
Right, all right, um, that's fine, that's what I was asking. I'll make a motion that we allow, um, Rebecca and Tim to reach out to our lending institution for the specific reason of the town office, so that upon a yes vote, we are ready to go.
I second that.
While working with our bond attorney, correct?
Definitely.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Thank you, Jamie.
Yep. Any further discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. All right, moving on to new business, knowledge receipt of revised zoning bylaws. Did everybody get their, nobody got a chance to read it, but we have received it, we will read it, and go from there.
Right, I haven't received a copy of it, but it's just.
Okay. Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec resignation, opening, Ray Rodriguez resigned due to health issues. I hope everything is okay.
He said he's fine.
He's fine? Good luck, Ray. Thank you for everything that you've done. So.
There's an open spot.
There's an open spot. Is anybody that's interested has to send a letter to the board?
Yep.
Correct?
They can send it to info or to me, and we can also make sure you get it.
Okay. All right, thank you. The gravel crush bid, did everybody get that from?
Joel.
Joel? Oh, I should have that on my phone.
Oh, I can remember.
It's five, five fifteen, and it's.
Well, there were three bids.
Yeah.
There's three bids on the gravel crushing, uh, basin, let me find it real quick. Uh, basin was five fifteen a yard. Hunter, I believe, was five fifty a yard, here it is. Basin Brothers was $5.15 per cubic yard.
Right.
Excuse me, Hunter was $5.50 per cubic yard. And Fuzzy Brothers out of New Hampshire was $5.50 per cubic yard.
What, um, just, quick question is, uh, um, I, I don't have the bid open, but I've got the email, and those aren't, the, that doesn't line up with what I'm seeing in the email.
Well, he sent you today, Bob, was last year's, um, price.
Got it.
This was last year's?
Right, last year we paid five fifty, I believe, right? Is that what it was?
It was five twenty-five.
Oh, five twenty-five, correct, from Hunter.
Yep.
I believe.
Yep, and Alvin was five eighty-four, and Basin was five eighty-nine, and then you just read off this year's.
I just read this year's, the, the bid, bids for, uh, 2021.
And Joel's recommendation was to go with the five fifteen, which was.
Basin Brothers.
Basin Brothers.
They've done it for us in the past.
I'll make a motion, we go with Basin Brothers for the, uh, uh, gravel bid.
I'll second that.
And just so everybody knows, wasn't it $27,000 the total?
Basin, Basin's total is $25,750.
Yep.
Hunter and Fuzzy Brothers were $27,500. So, it's about a $2,200 difference.
Yep, okay. Just wanted to make sure that was out there, but I can't really look and find any.
Well, that's why I blow it up, I'm only having glasses.
Okay, so, could, did I have a motion? Sorry.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Yep.
Okay. Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you, everybody. All right, now, we're gonna move on to warning documents regarding the new election.
Okay, that's me again. So. All right. So, I have, um, rewarned everything, although not officially warned yet, I just have the documentation, I need you guys to approve it, and then it will be lightning, lightning fire tomorrow done, okay? Um, I have the following things, I have the town, I did send them to you. Um, the town apparel warning, at least five people have looked at this. So, I've had the lawyer look at it, Tim looked at it, we looked at it five times, we had Julie look at it. Um, so, I had you guys look at it. So, the town apparel warning first, I would like approval on that. That's ballot articles four through whatever the last one is.
Thirty-nine.
Yeah.
Don't move.
Definitely.
Any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
Okay, next is the special warning, which is articles one through three, that includes the bond. It has a different kind of warning that needs to happen, and, um, as long as you guys have, um, approved this, we have, uh, typed signatures for you legally done here. So, you don't need to sign anything. Um, but this one will be warned three times. This is the one that has to have a certain amount of warnings. I worked with the bond attorney to pick the dates on this. So, I'll be contacting the banner tomorrow and making sure those dates are covered, and the invoice will be sent to us. So, I need this one to be approved. This is the special warning, one through three.
Make a motion, we approve the special warning, one, articles one, two, and three.
All second, okay. No discussion. Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
Okay, lastly, um, we re-prepared the resolution certificate, which is your, your bond resolution. Julie will be attesting to this. Um, I just need you to approve it and accept it. All dates have been changed. Julie looked at this today, she's here, she'll, if, I think, if she has a problem with it, she'll unmute it, but we indicated that everything looks good. So, I need this one to be approved.
Make a motion, we approve.
Any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye.
Okay, so tomorrow, I will be sending, uh, everything to where it needs to go. I will be driving around, hanging up the new warnings, the ballots will be ordered, I think Julie said probably tomorrow. She has all the information that she needs, and that's it. So, unless anyone has anything for me?
I would like to ask you any questions.
Yeah, Julie, you want to unmute?
Maybe we should get a couple more.
Hello?
Hi, Julie, are you there?
Yes.
Hear me, ma'am? I was wondering, 'cause a lot of people have asked me, what do you want them to do with their old ballots? And can we, a couple people have asked how we have the, um, envelope in there to return to us. It's already postmarked. Are they allowed to use that, or do we have to send them a new one?
No, when we do, I've been, I'm asking everybody to return their whole envelope if possible.
In the mail?
In that way. And, no, if they're gonna come and vote in person, I want them to bring their envelope, their whole packet. If they can drop off their envelopes, they are more than welcome to drop them off at, you know, when I'm open, because then I can pull them out for the next election, because everybody's gonna get a new one for the next round. So, if they could return them, I, it would, you know, greatly be appreciated.
Okay, that's what a lot of people are asking me, what to do with the old ones, and they didn't wanna throw away the envelopes, because we do have postage on them.
So, yes, I ask, I would like them to bring them back if possible.
All right.
And, and Jamie, Jamie's, uh, brought it up, Julie, I don't know if you heard him, but that we can put it in the Dropbox out here, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That was it, Julie. Thank you for.
Yeah, and just, my other thing is, and like I said, I'm there on Sunday, uh, this coming Sunday, from ten to two. So, they're more than welcome to bring their, um, voted school ballots and stuff to me also, or they can bring their entire packet back. And then I will be there Monday, nine to four thirty also.
Okay, and we have those posted on our site, correct? The dates and times.
And I hung it up at the store today as well.
And I have, it's also on my front door, that they can drop them off.
Okay, Julie, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, our, oh, we have, um, liquor license here, um, for Dwyer's. It's a renewal application. Can I entertain the motion?
Motion approved.
Any discussion? Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Okay, so, that ends.
You're, do we all have to sign that, or just you?
I think we all have to sign it.
I think so.
Um, I just wanna make sure I'm not skipping anything. We did that, we did that, we did that, we did the warnings. What were your board business?
Yeah, I got, I got a couple of things I'd like to bring up, um, in light of our, um, delay in, um, our election. So, I think, in, in my opinion, um, from any, for any board meeting until the new election on March 30th, I believe we should, um, hold fast on only, um, important business. I don't think we, you know, like, like, essential business coming out, you know, liquor licenses are pretty essential, that kinda stuff. I don't think we should take on any new tasks, um, as a board until after March 30th. That's my opinion. I don't know if we wanna, if we need to make a motion, or how we wanna handle that.
Are you referring to, like, appointments to commissions and stuff?
Well, and that, that was, that was another thing as well. I wanted to, you know, business, um, appointments, appointments to, to any of our committees or commissions, DRB, planning commission, anything else that's out there. You know, I think the rec department might be a little bit different, but, you know, if somebody was very interested in getting on that, I don't think it'd be a problem, but our other committees that are, that are pretty vital to, to town and the way the town runs, I think we should hold off on those until after March 30th as well. And I also have some things I'd like to talk about, but I wanna do that with a new board for, for appointments on committees and commissions.
I think that's a good idea.
Do we need to make a motion, or, or?
No, I don't think.
I don't think, I don't think we need to make a motion, but I guess I'll defer to whoever has the fact.
So, Bob.
I think if we're all in agreement, I'm fine with it, you know, and, and we're on record as agreeing with it, so it's like having a motion, we're fine.
Okay. I didn't skip over anything, I have so many writings here. Appointments, new business, we're good. So, now we can open up to public comment.
And, and there will be another public comment after.
After, yes, that's correct.
All right.
Because we're gonna.
Go into executive.
Yeah, but we may have to restructure something after the executive, so that'll be all the comment, okay?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanna make that, yeah.
There's someone joining, hold on.
Okay.
Uh, okay, there's Laura. Um, all right, so, Mike Slattery, go ahead, unmute yourself.
Hold on a second.
Oh, no, sorry.
Well, I gotta get my phone out, so I can time them, that's all.
Oh, he's getting the timer out.
I'm getting the timer out, I'll get the old egg timer going.
We have to be fan-squared.
No, I'm good, I'm good.
I'm forty seconds into this already, Mike.
No, no, no.
You're good.
Okay, all right. Hey, guys, um, good idea about the returned, uh, envelopes. I was gonna suggest that tonight. I hope that helps, Julie. I mean, anybody that doesn't need to mail in a school ballot, um, why not just drop them off? You know, a fifty cents here, a buck fifty there, whatever. The other thing is, and maybe this is a question for Julie, is, is it possible, if we haven't ordered new ballots yet, is it possible, or does the state regulate the color of the ballots? So, when people now are sending in ballots, if they have a different colored ballot, and you don't have to look for, um, a date on it, does that help, uh, Julie, or whoever helps her count the ballots? Um, I, I think it would. I don't even know if it's remotely possible, to be honest with you. I mean, maybe they're uniform, maybe the state sets that rule, Julie might know. So, Julie, before you unmute and respond to that, if you're gonna do that, the other thing is, and Rebecca, I'm not sure I heard, I heard you talking about that it's okay to strike Joyce Held from the ballot. Who, who, who said that you could do that? I'd like to know that, and I'd like to know their reason why.
Sure. So, um, Will Sanning, the head of elections at the Secretary of State, um, our lawyer reached out to him and had that discussion with him, because Joyce had written us a request asking to be struck from the ballot. And so, they conferred, and, um, if you'd like, I can cut and paste that email and send it off to you. With the statute and everything, okay?
Yeah, please do that, because there certainly could be an impact with her on or off of the ballot. And, um, and, and, and she had the same deadlines the rest of us had to withdraw her name from the ballot, and I understand things are different now, but, uh, the fact remains. It's like we're, we're having two go-arounds for everything now. So, just, just wanna throw that out there. Rebecca, thank you. I would like to see that, please. I'm sure I'll have follow-up with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, can you answer?
Yeah, Julie, go ahead.
Hi.
Hi, go ahead, Julie.
I had already planned on changing the color of the ballots, so that way, there will be no confusion in it come election time on the 30th. Um, we're gonna, instead of the white and yellow, I haven't decided which ones yet, what color are what yet. Um, I will be doing it tomorrow morning, and then, but they are definitely gonna be different colors.
Good move. I knew you'd be on it, Julie.
Thank you.
So, all right, are you, is Mike on? Jenny, go ahead, unmute yourself. What is that?
What is that?
Jenny, Jenny, go ahead. No, we can't hear you, Jenny. Jenny, can't hear you.
Jenny, we can't hear you. Uh.
All we hear is squeaking.
All we hear was weird tweaking. Oh, it's like.
It's still doing it.
I guess take the mic away from the hamster wheel.
Go on to somebody else and then go back to her.
There is no one else, but you know what I'm gonna do, Jenny? Um, I'm gonna remove the microphone from our computer and see if it makes a difference. Hold on. Go ahead, Jenny, try to talk again. No, she's gone. Um.
Do you want to have her call the number?
That what I'm gonna do, Jenny, do you have do you have? Do you have her cell phone, Mike? Can you call her and we keep put her on speaker, please? Yeah, Jenny, Mike's gonna call you and put you on speaker, okay? Okay. That's weird.
How there.
Hello.
Sorry about that. I don't know why my computer's not working.
No problem.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so. Can my speaker start now?
Of course.
Yeah, go ahead, Jenny.
I just want to say I appreciate the board. Hold on, it's really hard to hear my echo. Okay, now I can't. Um, yeah, I appreciate the board holding off on making any kind of um.
Jenny, if you can hear us, I don't think we can hear you.
Jenny, can Jenny hold on? We're yeah, we're gonna start you over, Jenny, because we.
Okay.
We're it's really we have that hamster sound again and.
I just got rid of it. I muted her.
I'm gonna re-log in.
No, 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 I muted her. She's good. Let her go.
Can you hear me this time?
Yes.
Through the phone?
Yes, yes.
Okay, anyway, um. I I just uh uh something to mention, too, when when you're speaking and you're in the office and we can't see you on the cameras, you can identify yourself. People kept texting me the whole time saying, who's speaking? I know all your voices, a lot of people. But, I mean, in the future, um, but it it has to be done by a town vote at a town meeting. So it's too late to put it on the town meeting this year, but perhaps next year, we could put it on the town meeting. And then people can opt in to receive a mailed version of the report. Beddington only prints two hundred. That could save a significant amount of money and save this kind of a um an issue going forward. So it's just, I mean, I'm saying this now for way later, but I just want to throw it out there. I wonder if you're gonna send a small postcard or anything to the town about the new vote. Because it's so hard to reach everybody, even through all of the mechanisms that the select board has and some of us personally have. A lot of people, I'm I'm worried that Tuesday, people are gonna be showing up not knowing, and that we'll have to deal with those of us that are working the election on Tuesday. But um it might help. I don't know if you want to send out a little postcard saying this is happening. Just a thought.
Um, I was actually, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Last thing I was gonna say is, um, how much was the lawyer paid for having to for Joyce being removed from the ballot, that whole conversation? We're spending so much on legal. So I kind of have an issue with spending on legal for that, but that's just throwing that out there. Um, I think that's it.
Okay, so I can speak. You might want to turn up your volume on the um your computer. Oh, no, she's still on the phone. All right, however it works. Okay, so maybe turn her off on the phone.
Yeah.
Okay, so regarding what the lawyer is charging to ask about Joyce Held. That's we've not been invoiced for that, so I can't answer that question at the moment. Um, it secondarily, um, because it's related to this with the full re-warning of the election. We all we have been instructed by both the Secretary of State and the VLCT to do literally everything through our lawyer. So that we do not have any kind of potential issues at all. We want to make sure every T is crossed and every I dotted. So in this regard, um, I I guess that more speaks to why uh the lawyer, we don't want to make any decisions one way or the other without speaking to him on this issue in particular. Because of the how grand the issue is, if that makes sense. So that's what I can speak to. Here you go.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I Jenny, you had a you had a great um point um about the um town reports being being mailed out. We actually got that information um yesterday. We obtained that. Um, our new um administrative assistant actually reached out yesterday and researched that out himself, and and we had that information. So I think that's a great idea, and I think that's something we really should look into. You know, in the in the coming years. I'm not sure we can do it next year unless we had a.
We can do it next year. We can put it on.
Okay, so that's fine. Um.
I already did some reading myself.
Yeah, yeah, I I mean, I looked it up. I think we have to have a townwide vote on it. We may have to have a special election just for that, but. Um, you know, so I'm not sure it'd be worth it, but we 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 could certainly look into that.
We can certainly streamline the book.
Yes.
Without and then do another mailing and then put it on the ballot for doing an opt-in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Jenny, are you all set? Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right. Okay, so Jim, close this. Go ahead on you.
Hopefully, we can hear him.
Can you hear me? Hello? Um, a along with the annual reports, I mean, I might make a suggestion. Um, I I know that the statute does allow that. If the town does vote, and I think that only the select board have to vote, that they only need to send out a postcard. That just specifies that the annual report is located at a certain location on the website, which means that you wouldn't have to. Send out the annual report at all, and that would save us a little more monies, but I mean, I'm I'm just trying to figure out that um. The safe safest way to save money, but at the same time, at least make sure that the word gets out there.
Exactly. It's like the school does. Yep, I understand.
We'll research all that out.
We're gonna research it all out. Do you have anything else, Jim?
No, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Have a good night. Anybody else?
Well, um, how about Bob?
Sure, Bob. Go ahead, Bob.
One other thing, if we can't get this done by next year, but the other thing I would suggest is we have that mailing list well in advance. So uh because that that would be that was the uh the failure this year. So um the the more in advance we have that, the more eyes on it, the more we can check it.
Exactly.
Okay, so I mean, Jim has his hands up, but he just goes on, assuming he's done.
Okay.
Okay.
So anything else before us, before we go into executive session?
To remind people that we're.
All right, we're gonna go into executive session for personnel disimplier disimpliery. And we will be coming out, taking action afterwards, and we will also add a discussion. For um reorganization of the administrative position, and we will also have another public comment. Thank you. Can I entertain a motion to go into?
Make a motion. We go into executive.
Can I have a second?
For for personnel disciplinary.
Mike?
Hi.
Bob? Bob?
Hi. Sorry, I put you on mute. Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, hi.
Okay, so I.
Okay, so we're back. I need a motion to come out of executive session, please.
Make a motion. We come out of executive session.
A second?
Second.
Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Angie, hi.
I'm gonna read a statement from the select board. This statement, uh, this will not be, there will be no public discussion on this. We are going to have some board discussion after this statement is read. And then we will open up for public comment, but it will not be for this statement or anything related to it. It's a statement and a motion. Select Board Statement. After Tuesday's executive session, we requested our executive assistant to resign effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty one with knowledge transfer. We asked to receive it today. Unfortunately, we were not provided with what we asked for. Because of this, I make a motion to terminate our executive assistant with thirty days' notice with knowledge transfer.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, hi. Okay, so now we have to move along with the discussion. We just hired Tim Darter. And should we put him as administrative assistant, executive, excuse me, administrative assistant? As a full-time person with training, hopefully for the next thirty days.
Well, I think I think we should offer it to him. Um.
It should be executive.
I think I think I'd like to keep Tim. Personally, I'd like to keep Tim in the in that position, or at least offer it to him. And and see where that goes from there. Um. We can discuss rate of pay with him. Um, then, you know, we can we can discuss that as a board, but I think right now, I think just offering that that position a forty hour week, I guess.
He may need a transition because of what we know about his current.
Right, right.
But I'm sure he he's already available for up to twenty nine, so I think that, you know. Also, if you decide to remove the Planning Commission, DRB, he will have he can just focus on that, so.
Well, I think, yeah, I think we need to do that, too, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're gonna reach out for interest.
Right.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
I would.
I make a motion that we offered Tim Darter, uh, who we had hired as an administrative assistant, to become the executive assistant to the board.
Second.
Effective effective immediately.
For forty hours.
Hmm.
Second, any further discussion? Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, hi. I also think that we need to take away the DRB and.
All the minutes.
All the minutes.
Planning Commission.
And Planning Commission away from the executive. And offer that position to Megan Albert. We.
We interviewed Megan.
Interviewed her, and we really liked her. She has, um, I don't have that with me tonight, but she has.
A lot of experience.
She has a lot of experience. She used to work for the town of Shasberry. Um, she has a master's degree.
If Tim is moving up, if he accepts our. If Tim is willing to accept.
This is Harry Person.
This is Harry Person. Sorry, for the people that can't see me. Um, is willing to accept our proposal, then all those duties that you're describing would be still on the assistant administrator. Who we're gonna offer to Megan Albert.
Right.
Right. Megan would Megan would come in and do minutes and agendas for for the board, uh, for the planning commission, for the DRB. Uh, for the Board of Health, any other boards or commissions that same as what our job description was for that to start with.
Assistant, some duties.
And could help with Tim. Yes. And Rebecca, absolutely.
Right.
Yep, the original plan. Yep.
See what's needed.
All right, so can I entertain a motion to reach out to Megan and ask her if she would be interested in that position?
Make a motion. We reach out to Megan Albert and offer her that position.
That's good.
Any further discussion? Wouldn't that be immediately for both of them, correct?
Yes.
Megan, yesterday.
Yes.
Because of the PC and DRB in particular.
Planning Commission, DRB, I need that right now.
Know that um Sid likes Megan as well, and he gives a thumbs up to her.
Okay. Okay.
That's a good point. That's a great point, actually.
Yeah, okay. Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, hi. All right, guys, do we have anything else to add into this discussion? Before we open up for public comment?
Do you want me reaching out to Tim and to Megan tomorrow?
Yes, please.
All right, done and done.
And. Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's not appropriate.
That's for us to do.
Not appropriate for me to do that.
Okay. So let's open up for public comment, if anybody has any public comment.
Jenny, back in if you.
Not in the waiting room. Oh, she's there. Um, Jenny has her hand raised. Go ahead, Jenny, unmute.
Please hear me. Can you hear me this time?
Yes, we can.
Yay. Um, okay, um, so I'm not speaking to your statement as you asked. But I just want to check on if the internal auditors do not get voted back in. Will the executive assistant assistant have it in their job description to do the town report?
Yes.
Okay, super, because I I just want to um say that I did watch the September tenth meeting, and Bob and Mike were very, very clear. On that transfer of knowledge, so um so I appreciate the hard work you guys have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it, Jenny?
Yes, yes, that's it.
And there's no other hands raised, so I think that we are probably good.
Make a motion. We adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, hi. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.